I saw your neighbors yesterday.
Yeah.
Smithfield.
Oh, how they doing?
They're doing good, but the town it was full, it's packed house, so it's not motor bus place they work.
Yeah, right, that's with the Russ Scott, right?
With those?
The Scott family.
Scott family.
They're gonna do an area motor bus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mike and uh, I was up there the other week trying to find a place and I finally found it.
Right.
Then they ended up, I drove back over them, so I shot the whole course and everything. We did news story on it. It seemed like everything was fine and I went sleeping last night and it it's just awful.
Yeah.
Big noise, all constant and on weekends it's impossible to just leave.
Right.
But during the weekend it's so, they're trying to figure something out.
Where's this at?
It's got a horse, the track's really nice.
You know where?
Yeah, racing in our lessons.
Yeah, I like the creek road.
I guess someone like my, the old bow course, it's like the the goat course, we use them as a
Oh, the silver, silver horse?
In mountain manners, oh, yes.
I would say the last group.
Wow.
Because they wanted to make sure that we knew where everything was. And it's not for beginners.
Right. That was professional grade, the guy they brought, I think they were initially used for the kids. I guess to show them how, because they never could be younger than that. And now they brought this guy and then I interviewed him too. And he decided to be doing it for a decade now and he designed that one, you know, it's like tires and it's whoops and tabletops and it's a pretty decent sized horse, you know.
He checked the nine holes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a good report too, or is it?
Uh, so you go up also, you go up Great Meadow.
Yes.
And you get past the red barn there and go in that entrance. And then you'll see signs that say back nine, back nine. And they cut some new roads and
Oh, so the orange.
Is it orange?
It was an orange horse.
Right.
Okay, I thought it was silk, silk now, it's a creek road, you're quite better. Yeah, that's so it was the one that went over the four two and down there.
Hmm.
So it's an orange horse, yeah.
Okay, you ready? So we will open the county meeting and please join us in the pledge allegiance. And the pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America. And to the following, we should say, one nation, united. And this is called for liberty and justice for all. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Okay.
Sir.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Uh.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September fourteen?
Okay.
Sorry. Comments or questions, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh, Pat, could we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, immediately before the meeting this uh evening, uh, the board attended a brief executive session discussion with respect to uh pending litigation and legal matters as well as real estate, no decision, no decisions were made, no deliberation, please.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, is there any public comment on non-agenda items from anyone? We hope you see that are well. Thank you. All eight two of us. We have a lot of seats. Uh, and then one on Zoom. Is any public comment, okay. Uh, announcements, Mike, Mark, when you got anything?
No.
No, okay, um, just a quick plug, uh, veterans. Uh, please give James Raffio a call. We are in search of a few good men and women to put on our banner program for the hometown heroes. Um, the shop local is underway, we're soliciting uh deals from our shops, we've got forty on board already. Uh, person of the year nominations are open, so if anyone would like to nominate somebody for person of the year for uh Little Smithfield twenty twenty three. Please visit our website and Mike, do you want to say a word about Trump or Tree?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's coming up. October.
And if folks would like to decorate their car, we could always use a few more good cars. And back to you, Mike, for the treasures report.
Uh, motion from our general cap, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Sir.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Uh, motion from our short cap, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
One second, uh, comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh, motion for workout, uh, three, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Of state. I just have a question, but we can go over that tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, motion from our general obligation bond, five hundred and one thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second, uh, comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Thank you. Um, solicitors report.
Uh, thank you, the first item on my report is the cable franchise fee. Uh, the board recalls, you've discussed once or twice in the past about potentially adjusting uh the franchise fee, I believe, under the franchise agreement. So your current franchise, cable franchise agreement, I believe expires in June twenty twenty four. Uh, the current franchise fee is the one statutory, statutorily permitted, which is a five percent. Uh, it, in my understanding that it's somewhat related or the discussions have been revolving around the potential for an LST tax, which is also on your agenda this evening uh for discussion. Uh, so I'm not sure if you want to uh simply uh, what, what, what is your intention this evening? Do you want to talk about the franchise agreement? I mean, it's, it's an agreement that's going to expire next year. Uh, in the event that you want to adjust the franchise fee, if you're gonna adjust it, you can't, you can't make it more. If anything, you'll, you can decrease it if you wanted to adjust it uh for some reason or another. And if we're gonna do that, we'll just have to notify uh it's Blue Ridge Cable, we'll have to notify them and uh make that adjustment and revision to the agreement uh at whatever, whenever you're at that point.
And
The whole affair.
And they require sixty days notice?
Um.
Or was it thirty?
You know, I was looking at the agreement today, there's nothing, uh, I don't think there's an actual amendment clause, it, it but something such as this, I think it would be as simple as notifying them that we wanted amendment. If they wanted to not agree to it, it would still come up in June. I don't know why they wouldn't agree to it between all of us here. Uh, because then, like I said, any adjustment would be a decrease. Uh, but if, if we had to wait until June of twenty twenty four, I mean, that, that would be the potential uh worst case scenario and that would just be, I think the only thing is if, if and when you were to definitively agree to ask the franchise fee to be adjusted, which would be a decrease, uh, we would, we would want wording language in that revision to the agreement indicating that similarly they would not, you know, they wouldn't charge the users any further fee associated with that, so the, the actual users, the, the, the uh, the customers of Blue Ridge would get a slight decrease because that franchise fee would be removed.
Hmm. And that can be done anytime?
Like I said, I don't think there's a specific amendment provision in the agreement. Uh, and if it expires in June, I mean, we can reach out. I guess when and if you're ready to pull the trigger on the LST tax.
Hmm.
Uh, maybe that's the same time you definitively try and adjust the cable franchise fee.
Hmm.
Is that fair?
Sounds good to me.
I remember we, we spoke about it briefly and the question was, is there a yearly payment plan that people have? I know you can pay, uh
You can pay in advance for your cable.
I don't know if you can pay for the whole year, so that would involve then reimbursing people that
Yeah, like I said, the language of that amendment to be plugged into the cable, the cable agreement would be um, uh, would, would account for that. It would account for the actual customers um, prices going down, whatever the franchise fee was, and it would also incorporate it through anyone's entitled to a credit or reimbursement or for something they've already paid for, that's no longer there.
All right?
Okay.
So is it fair to say the board, are you gonna wait to definitely act on that until you know what you're doing with the LST tax? Did you approve the LST tax?
It, it wasn't um whether we're gonna do anything with the LST, which is with the fire and EMS time. The LST is, is, has nothing to do with that.
Okay, okay.
Well, honestly, neither one of them fires or EMS.
We, we, we all understand, I get it.
They're all, they're all independent, they're all sources of rev, those other taxes are sources of revenue to fund EMS, so we, we, we could eliminate the cable franchise fee down if we wanted. So that is something the board will have to consider as far as timing, but
Yeah, just so it's clear, the fire, a fire tax is separate instinct from the LST, I didn't want to, I didn't want to make, I didn't want to confuse.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else under that at this point for me? Cable, well, franchise fee?
You know, think about, we wouldn't eliminate the cable franchise fee until we
Until we had the LST, well, right, but I'm saying, we could start the long rolling now and ask for it to be eliminated January first or uh some other time, because so I recall, I recall um the discussion being that we would figure that we, we would figure out the knots during um a budget meeting, we could figure out the exact timing of each.
Okay.
You know, unless you, unless the board is ready now.
No, I don't think I need all the dollars and cents.
Right. Okay, so I'm hearing there's nothing for the solicitor to do.
Not at this point.
Yeah.
Until, until the board directs me otherwise, I'm not, I don't need to do anything. Uh, the next item on my report is the uh proposed local services tax. As the board is where we've talked about this once or twice in, in your last uh four or two meetings. The LST tax, uh, which was permitted by statute, probably close to ten years ago, if not more, um, is a tax that took place, that took the place of the emergency services tax, uh, which also took the place of the occupational
Right.
uh, privilege tax. And if uh Middle Smithfield Township were to proceed with an LST tax, uh, the, the draft ordinance that I put together, you would be repealing the occupational privilege tax and authorizing the collection of the local services tax. The local services tax is a tax on all employed individuals within the township. Uh, this would be for a flat rate of fifty-two dollars per year and that would be collected on a uh, uh, a payment, uh employees, if they're paid, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, it would be whatever they would be pulled out of their paycheck would be dependent upon how
Hmm.
there, um, there are specifics as to exemptions. If you're in the uh military service, if you were disabled due to your service, if you make less than twelve thousand dollars per year.
Who set that twelve thousand now?
That's in the statute.
That it has to be.
Those exemptions are word for word from the statute and you're looking at section one seventy-six thirty-eight. Um, yeah, that wording with respect to the anyone who receives income and net profits from all sources within Middle Smithfield Township of less than twelve thousand dollars in a calendar year is exempt, uh, that would be, that's straight from the statute. Similar with the language regarding individuals that served in any war or conflict and uh was honorably discharged uh due to a, an injury or disability.
And this is for each adult resident and non-resident employed within the
Within the township. And there are provisions in there if they're, if they're employed in more than one municipality. Uh, there's a priority of the claim section provided, and again, that's, that's straight from the statute. A lot of the language in here is statutory and it comes from the state statute. Uh, and like I said, this has been around for probably in excess of ten years, a lot of municipalities have already adopted it.
That is true.
There's a provision here for self-employed individuals uh within the township. Uh, we did circulate the draft version of my ordinance to Burkhymmer, who collects your current occupational privilege tax and they would be in charge of collecting the uh LST tax, they had a couple of comments and I've incorporated them into this latest version. And I did suggest that we send this, send Burkhymmer the, the, the latest version of the draft.
They sent it.
Did they have any further comments?
No, and they said, you know, thank you for adding our comments, if we have anything further, I'll let you know. I didn't hear from them.
Yeah, a lot, their comments were additional language taken from the statute, actually, they took it from the DCD form ordinance on DEC's website. Uh, a lot of it was relevant and controlled, regardless of it being in the ordinance or not, uh, but it doesn't hurt to put it in the ordinance. So at this point, are there any questions or comments for me at this point?
Where, where do we uh confirm that um, the school district doesn't get any more than they, they currently get from the occupation tax? We don't see anywhere.
Well, the statute addressing the LST, uh, there's a provision in the statute uh indicating that if, if the municipality and the school district are already collecting ten, that if a municipality goes to the fifty-two under the LST, the school district will not, the school district will not, you'll continue to pay whatever the district is currently collecting under the occupational privilege tax, but you won't be adding to whatever they're currently collecting.
Personally, I'd like to see that in here.
I can, I can incorporate that. I, I think there's a way to incorporate, like I said, that's statutory, that's in the statute, but we can, we can plug it in there.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have it.
Okay.
So that's one more revision and then uh
Yeah, what I'll do
Actually, couldn't we act on this tonight and then um
Uh, I prefer
On that revision?
Well, I think this is a pretty substantive revision, so I would prefer, give, you, you meet in two weeks, right?
Hmm.
Let me make the change, recirculate it, maybe even send it to Burkhymmer one more time, doesn't hurt. I mean, they're gonna be the ones collecting it. Uh, let them know that we're adding this new provision regarding the school district.
We're just repeating what's already in the statute.
Right.
We're just copying and pasting.
And I'll circulate it to the board, you guys can review it and at your next meeting, if everyone's okay with that new provision, you can authorize it to be advertised uh for a public hearing. And this one does have to be, I think it's three successive weeks. Uh, it has to be advertised because this is a new tax, you're repealing the occupational privilege, but you are adopting a new tax, the LST. Okay?
Yep.
So with that, I'll make that
It would still get done by the end of the year, no?
Uh, October, yeah, I probably think your second meeting in November, right?
One, one, we had one meeting in November.
Oh, when is that?
And then, and it's on November The sixteenth. And, and then, and then there's December fifth and twenty-eighth.
Okay. Well, let's see. You meet on October's twelve.
And the twenty-sixth.
Well, if you authorize it on the twelfth, we'll get it out to the paper, one, two, three. We should be okay for the sixteenth. Yeah, that give, there's between the twelve, one, two, three, four. There's four, five weeks between the twelve and sixteen, so you should be okay. Again, for the November sixteenth meeting for a public hearing to adopt the ordinance.
I mean, it isn't as if the statute's gonna change. And not putting, repeating a statute in our ordinance doesn't change anything. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
If we don't repeat what the statute says in here, it's not gonna change, the statute
But I'm just saying, I would, I would prefer it to be memorialized in, in New York, that's all, this way
Yeah, I think we can look at it. So I'm fine with that. Yeah, I always prefer, if it was something very simple, but this is a substantive provision, I'd prefer because if I advertise it, you know, the hearing and then we're reading it and you don't like what I put in, I don't wanna I don't want to even put that position.
Right.
So I prefer to be able to forward you the revision before you authorize it to go out. And I, we're gonna be, it looks like we'll be able to meet that November sixteenth timeframe.
Hmm. Okay, I'm saying, repeating the statute in here, is it gonna change?
I mean, it'll be a little specific to you, we might reference the school district and whatever the history is, but the big, the, the language.
As long as we have it on time. Okay.
I mean, there are certain, I mean, we have to send this to DCD, we, there are certain things we're gonna have to do. Um, and, you know, we are moving it as quick as we can as we talk.
Hmm.
Okay? All right, so I will make that revision, recirculate the revised version and hopefully at your next meeting, you authorize it, we'll advertise it for the November sixteenth. Uh, the next item under my report is the proposed solar energy ordinance. If you recall, um, we discussed the county comments on the proposed zoning amendment for solar uh systems at your last meeting. And I believe the board wanted to incorporate two specific provisions that the county commented on. The one is found on page five of what's in front of you and it's section uh, it's article three, section two, new little N.
Hmm.
And it's no PSES, uh, which is a, on a solar system. Uh, shell encroached within any wetlands, wetland buffer, watercourses, buffers, steep slopes, floodplains, floodways or indoor other sensitive nature natural areas identified during the conditional use hearing. Okay? And then the other county comment that I believe you wanted to incorporate is found on page six. New subsection E five. And it reads, the applicant shall greet to execute and record a maintenance agreement ensuring the continued maintenance of the screening in a manner and form acceptable to the township, including but not limited to the posting of a performance guarantee. Uh, I don't, you know, are there any other comments or revisions that you wanted to incorporate?
Hmm.
Okay. So with that, I don't know if you wanted to consider authorizing that to be advertised or if you wanted to sit on that for a little bit and consider it at a future meeting?
If we're ready, we're ready. I would make that motion to
Oh, you know what? We have to send it back to the county.
Oh, because we
It's a zoning ordinance, it's a zoning ordinance and we do have to send it back to the county planning commission before we advertise, I'm sorry, it's a very procedurally, these are, Saldo and zoning ordinances are very particular.
Wow.
Uh, because we did make those two changes, we would have to first send it back to the county planning commission for review and the township, so with that understanding, would the board want any change in motion authorizing it to be resent to the Monrooke County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission for review and comment?
Sure. Motion.
Okay.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay. And the last item on my report is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for articles one and three. Uh, we spoke briefly about these at your work session last week. I circulated uh draft versions of revised versions for articles one and three. Uh, article one was the general provisions. Uh, I think we went through the proposed changes associated with those, the big ones for tho, for that article were the revisions uh made due to the comprehensive plan update that you adopted in twenty twenty-two. Uh, for the most part, are there any questions or comments regarding those proposed revisions?
No.
And then article three, that's the zoning map and establishment of districts. There were very few uh proposed revisions to that article. Except I did highlight a few, the senior adult, the senior active adult development option and the conservation development option, the reason I highlighted those is just to, almost as they uh to tag those when we get to those further sections, uh, further off in zoning ordinance. Any questions or comments from the board on article three?
Nope.
Okay. So with that, I think that's all I have on my report, I do have, I will have some comments on additional agenda and items later on this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
True, thank you. Uh no engineer's report, no business, that brings us to, back to you, Pat, resolution zero-nine dash twenty twenty-three dash one for the Keystone Communities Grant. So this is to ratify the grant that we have, the township has submitted um, to bolster the revitalized two O nine, it's a facade improvement grant. Um, and Pat has this resolution prepared for us, did you want to say a few words about it?
Uh, sure, I believe Michelle Annette sent me a correspondence uh, that the, for the Keystone Communities Program Grant application, they were looking for a resolution from the township authorizing it to be e- executed. So the intent and the purpose of this uh pretty straightforward resolution is authorizing the Township Economic Development Manager as well as the Township Secretary to execute the application for the Keystone Communities Program Grant, as well as any additional documents or agreements necessary to facilitate an assistance obtaining the grant. Uh, and that's, that's the intent of what this resolution is doing. I will say, um, and I think I mentioned it earlier, I'm not sure if the intent of the township with respect to those grant funds is gonna be something that the grant uh will be able to be used for, but that we can review once the, once they provide us the grant agreement, if, if you were to uh secure or re-boarded the grant. But all this resolution does is authorize you to proceed with the application.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, do, I don't have a resolution number, do read.
Yeah. And you're
Oh, other, other thing, okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve resolution zero-nine dash twenty twenty-three dash one? All second, comments or questions?
I have one question, it says for the Minnesota County Township organization two O nine project, but this isn't for a specific project.
I'm not following.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, typically we have five word grant, you have the scope of, of the improvements that you're gonna make.
Yes, and that was in the grant application.
But
I think I understand what Mike is indicating, we could re, I guess we could revise project to program. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, this is just being, just added to the pot, correct? I mean, it's not, we don't have any specific projects yet.
We did, we went over them in a workshop session as far as what we submitted for the application.
But, but we don't have any, let me say, we don't have any approved projects.
No, I can say that because a project before it is approved has to come before this board and I have to call out any projects coming from
That's correct. But they wanted examples of projects in the program.
Okay, so these are just examples, these are not specific.
If the board, just as the board changed the look or amended a grant, once we were awarded the grant to change the generator from the community center to, from, excuse me, the Whispering Pond to the community center, we have the ability to do the same thing here.
And I do believe, uh, Annette, I think the, the document you sent me, there are, I, I scanned it very quickly just to get the basics to put the resolution together.
Hmm.
But I do believe there's specific projects listed in there.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with them, but I believe there's a handful of projects in there. I don't know what they are, because I'm not, I'm not involved.
They are facade projects.
Right, you said they're examples, they're not, they're not approved.
Correct. But without that, we could not submit the application. So there's a motion, a second, uh, any other comments or questions? Anyone? No, then June.
I will, so, so just so I'm clear. So the projects in the application are not finally approved yet?
By us, no.
I, and motions made, I'm just making a comment, I would you know, I've indicated before, I'm not, I, I, I'm not sure if you were to be awarded the grant, if they're going to allow for the grant funds to be used as you're intending them to use.
Hmm.
Uh, but we can find that out when we get the agreement from the entity providing grant, but
About the grant.
But
Correct.
But I would suggest if there is a possibility in that grant application to indicate that these are the proposed, as, to make it clear that they're not finally approved yet. Those projects specifically.
I haven't seen that page.
I am, it, it's submitted, it has been submitted. They asked for examples of projects of where this, the funds would go. We provided that the Of where this, the funds would go, we provided the facades that fit the. Um parameters of this grant. If the board decides that they like looking at the windows in one of the applications, we could simply. Return the money for that portion, cause it was up to ten thousand dollars per facade. If the board decides that they don't wanna approve any of those five things, then we just return the money? You know, but to answer your question, no, this just does not, it can't just go into a pot, they wanted to know specifically. What are, what are, how might you use this money?
But so you said examples.
So, motion, second, any other comments or questions? All in favor? Uh joiner date, I believe this is you, Mark?
Resolution number zero nine twenty twenty-three dash two, joiner date for Maria Victoria and Tina Victoria. On the Kittle Drive.
So you're making a motion to approve that resolution?
There.
Any comments or questions? Been a motion and a second, or a favor?
Make a motion to confirm the award for the Green Light Goat Program. Which we've started, what, twenty eighteen, I think?
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion to send a load of the P A Americans for the hybrids requested by Bushville Park.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Make a motion to accept the resignation letter from Gulf Coast Committee Member.
We're sorry to see Michael Sweeney go. Now, all second, any comments or question? All in favor? Who would like to make a motion to authorize the Township Secretary to advertise the notice of intent to appoint? As we do every year, certified public accountants to replace the elected auditors. And make an examination of all the accounts of the county's office. Any comments or questions? See, we have one of our elected auditors online, oh no, we don't. Wrong James, all in favor? Mark or Mike?
Make a motion to waive the banner fees for the Monroe County Veterans Association for. Veteran State Parade and event, event date is November eight.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, so any public comments, if anyone? Don't have any, but anything for those of us who have to uh take the tax out? When it happens? The dollar, the dollar a week, a week tax, is that what we're talking about? Oh, the L S T tax, yeah, the ceiling for that tax is fifty-two dollars. Um right now, under the occupational privilege tax, Burkhymmer collects ten dollars. Five goes to the school district and five for local services here in the township, so the ceiling is fifty-two. And it's kind of starts in the middle or these, it's just whenever they're working here, correct? Yes. I'm making sure I. Yeah, yeah. I know my people will come to people on these things, but I have to explain it to the people who are gonna say.
I think Burkhymmer will be instrumental in getting the word out to all the employers within the township as well.
And, and be able to explain it, so, yeah, it's the Burkhymmer tax. Right, and it's their right to vote. So any other questions, any other public comment? Anyone? Uh who would like to make their favorite motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Comments or questions, all in favor? David, David is on. David Perez, I recognize you, um Energy in the Bank. Uh I know, I know you and Pat, and you're ignoring each other back and forth.
Correct.
Is there anything you wanted to talk about before Michelle turns off?
Uh just a minute, I want to stop on the recording, because the meeting has ended, so, hold on.
Or you could call him.
Yeah, I can, I can give you a call tomorrow, whatever you prefer, Pat, I, I sent you an email earlier.
Yeah, I think the, I think the agreement's in final form, uh I think, uh I did see the certificate of insurance. It's now naming the township as an additional insurance, that's what we were looking for. And we're just, I forward to do a form, performance bond, uh that can be used, and I think that's where it's at.
Yeah, and I, I sent an email um after that performance uh bond, um just touching base with regards to the performance bond, so. Um that was. That was all on my end. In regards to. The cost of the performance bond itself.
I have not had an opportunity to talk to the board, we can discuss it right now, if you prefer, the, the meeting's over.
But I don't know what's going on Zoom, so that's probably still important.
Okay.
Well, do you wanna step back?
Uh no, they were requesting uh that, I guess, when they made the original. Proposal uh through Co-Stars, uh that they weren't, or actually probably before that, I think the amount was uh. You know, they provided the, the proposal a while back. Um that it was before they realized they needed a performance bond, uh so they're looking to see if the township would be agreeable to flip the bill for the performance bond. I, I anticipate that not being an option, David. Uh but I haven't had the opportunity to bring it to, I'm bringing it to the attention of the board right now, thank you for, I, it slipped my mind.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, I just figured we, since it was brought up to us in the last meeting, you, uh we, we discussed the performance bond, and then we've been looking into it. So we got information with regards to it, uh the cost of it overall, so since we hadn't incorporated that originally, so that's why I reached out in regards to that matter.
Okay, discuss this, or?
Uh it's up to the board, if you wanna discuss it now.
We'll talk about it in the, or work session tomorrow?
Well, I mean. I mean, from my standpoint, what I do, I mean. In my experience, that if the owner or the person initiating the contract. Is requiring this bond, then they would pay for it, so we would have to pay for that, as we're requiring it from the contract. We can't just add requirements and then not pay.
Right, right.
I mean, that, that's been my experience, and, you know, but it's only three years.
Yeah, I mean, it's our project.
Right.
You know, and then. How long will it take for you to complete this project?
The project itself?
Yeah.
Once, once permitting um goes through, and we have permits ready to go, it shouldn't take more than two weeks. And then, to install, and then after that, we um work with the electric company for interconnection, cause they have to do their tests and so on. But the actual construction installation won't take, I mean, once we have all the materials and everything, it shouldn't, more than two weeks. On site.
I would recommend that you submit a change order to the township.
Change order? Okay, understood.
Well, there's no, so this way we're not to go around the contract, we just sign that, and then. Send in a change order.
We could do that.
You okay with it?
Yeah, uh, does that sound?
That's what, yeah.
I mean, I mean, things aren't fair, I mean.
I, I agree, if we're the ones requiring it, it's a township project, and how do you expect somebody else to?
Right.
Pay for it?
And just to be clear, you require this for every project.
Right, right.
The seller on the library?
Oh, thank you.
What?
Every month, library people ask for day question.
Oh, maybe they'll pay for the bond, I'm sure.
Well, no, I mean, this has been going on for. Because they know the elected will. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so we're ready, so we're ready to go then with the contract? I don't wanna roll this on.
You know, just send us a change order, we can execute the comment, and we agreed to that.
Understood.
All right, thank you very much, David.
Thank you, thank you all very much. All right, have a good evening.
Yeah, have a good night.
Good night. Likewise.
We'll be playing up first.